Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 9, 2019, regular session of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to remind folks who are in the audience, who may like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to kindly fill out a speaker request form, they're in the foyer in the back, kindly give those to our city clerk Lynn Fizikas, she will get those to me, and we'll try to get you on in the order that they are received. Just to note that if you'd like to speak under public participation on any subject, even though it may be on the agenda, you're more than welcome to do that. If you would prefer to wait until we get to the item on the agenda during which you might want to make some comments, feel free to do that also. Also, just a reminder for those of you who would like to speak tonight, we would like to try to keep you to your comments to three minutes or less. We have quite an agenda tonight. With that being said, I would ask Clerk Fizikas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Alderman Fanouken?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda with the following change, that we move item J-10 until after item L-4. J-10 is the item about canceling the December 23 meeting.
So we're moving item 10 regarding the cancellation, the possible cancellation of the December 23 meeting to right before our comments, right?
Correct.
And reports, okay. You'll move that as a...
I did, yes.
Okay? I entertain a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we make that change on tonight's agenda. Any other changes or additions, deletions? If not, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was our second, please?
Second by Alderman Verbic, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Motion by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
The agenda is amended as presented and as approved. Okay, now we move to public participation. We have one person who has indicated they would like to speak under this portion of the evening. Again, anyone who would like to speak to an item that they may want to speak to early, you're more than welcome to use this time. But right now, we have one speaker, Duane Brown.
Duane Brown, fourth ward. Several positive changes are happening in DeKalb. The groundwork to win the bid for the 1.2 million square foot distribution facility continues. We need this and the $69 million it would generate in 15 years and the 1,000 jobs it would create. The cornerstone building at First and Lincoln is a dramatic change for the better in downtown DeKalb. It, along with the Plaza DeKalb, Sun Dog, the Egyptian Theater Edition, and with the demolishment of the Mooney property to build the Agora Complex, marks a huge step forward in the modernization of DeKalb. I enjoy the library addition, and I think it's a beautiful building for the public to enjoy. I was sad to hear Eduardo's Mexican Restaurant was closing after 39 years. It was one of the anchor restaurants in DeKalb. I hope it sells quickly and the new owners open up as soon as possible. It would be great to see the former O'Learys and McCabes open back up with new ownership also. I was glad to see the Illinois State Championship football games come to Husky Stadium. Former NIU quarterback Jordan Lynch coached his team, the Mount Carmel Caravan, to a Class 7A state title. It's great for the schools and financial benefit for DeKalb. I wish we had the championships every year, not just odd number of years. I want to see, I want to end with a few thoughts on family. "Family: A unit composed not only of children, but of men, women, an occasional animal, and the common cold." Ogden Nash. Call it a clan, call it a network, call it a tribe, call it a family. Whatever you call it, whoever you are, you need one." Jane Howard. The difference between a man and a father is that the former shares his genes, but the latter gives his life." Craig T. Lowensboro. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. I'm going to assume, unless anybody raises their hand, that they would like to wait until we get to the item on the agenda during which they'd like to make their comments? Okay, we'll move it right along then. We're on item E on your agenda, Presentations. At our last meeting, I mentioned that we have a number of individuals in our community who are, who are really true treasures. We have a brick and mortar treasure, big time, and that's the Egyptian Theater. What I'd like to do tonight is to read a proclamation in recognition of the theater's 90th anniversary. I will not read the entire agenda, because there are quite a few whereases, but this will be posted on not only our city website, but on the Egyptian Theater website, I'm told. This proclamation does honor the 90th anniversary of the Egyptian Theater, December 10, 2019, whereas the Egyptian Theater was constructed in 1929 as a shining example of Art Deco architecture, and whereas the Egyptian Theater has been a host to many famous performers in the past 90 years, including Presidents John Kennedy and Presidents Ronald Reagan, whereas in 1978, the Egyptian was in danger of demolition due to its deteriorating condition. A group of concerned citizens formed the Egyptian, the Preservation of the Egyptian Theater, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The Egyptian Theater is now on the National Register of Historic Places. Last year, the State of Illinois Office of Tourism named the Egyptian Theater in the top 20 architectural treasures in the state of Illinois. So tonight, I, Jerry Smith, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim December 10, 2019, as Egyptian Theater Day in recognition of its 90th anniversary in the city of DeKalb, and I call upon all citizens to recognize the contributions of many dedicated volunteers and donors for their efforts over the years. I further call upon our citizens to continue attending the theater's events and supporting efforts to preserve this unique and historical venue to future generations. The executive director of the Egyptian Theater, Alex Nirad, is with us. Alex, if you'd like to come up, I'll present this proclamation to you, and if you'd like to also have any members of your board who are here, I understand you're a promo guy, you want some pictures, so I'm going to come out front and present this to you, okay? Congratulations.
Thanks for all you are doing in our community. Good very good evening.
It was 50 years ago when a slightly younger Gary Mullis started something that he had a real passion for, and that is to have an event. He's into country music, he's a country music songwriter, he really cares about kids in the community, and so he started this Toys for Tots Drive, and he had his 50th such event just a couple of weeks ago down at the Senior Citizen Highrise. A number of us were there, and it was a great event. Gary is with us tonight, and prior to presenting Gary with his certificate of appreciation and recognition, I'd like to call on you, Gary, so if you'd go to the podium and take a minute or two just to tell us about Toys for Tots, what you did this year, and a little bit of over the 50-year history that you've been doing this.
First of all, I want to thank the community, everyone in the community for supporting me for 50 years with that country music show, Toy for To- Toy Drive, I've been doing for 50 years. And a week ago, that past Sunday, we cut the cake in honor of doing it for 50 years. Had on the cake, congratulations, 50-year Toy Drive organizer Gary Mullis. Had white cake, white fortune, red and blue roses, a light, all that, and DeKalb Mayor Jerry Smith chopped by, he couldn't stay too long, and DeKalb City Manager Bill Nicholas chopped by, but you got caught for it, and you had to go outside, and, but, Illinois state representation, Jeff Cracker, I can't pronounce his Latin name real good, he helped to cut the cake, Matthew Loujohn, N.C. of the show, pastor of the Kingston, King Manson Church in Kingston, he helped to cut the cake, and a baked player, guitar player from Newcastle, Pennsylvania, Roy Rubin, he helped to cut the cake, and I held a certificate, a plat certificate, a road for doing it for 50 years from Kimberly Glover of Lexington, Alabama. She does a song content, I put my song in every year. I got a big plat certificate from her, and I really like to thank the community and everyone for helping me, supporting me down through the year. I really appreciate it.
Gary, we've got another certificate for you, come on up here.
And St. WOBK Radio, too, all the newspapers and Chronicle Midweek.
This certificate of recognition is presented to Gary Mullis on December 9, 2019, and it's safe. Certificate of recognition, this certificate is presented to Gary Mullis. The City of DeKalb City Council and its staff extend congratulations and appreciation to Gary Mullis, celebrating 50 years of the annual Toys for Tots Drive. Signed, Jerry Smith, the mayor of the City of DeKalb. Gary, you're a special person, thanks for doing this.
Well, thank you.
Gary, come back up here, I've got something that a special friend gave to me and asked me to present to you. It's the midweek article that they, perhaps you saw it on Gary.
Picture of it. I'd like you to take a picture.
Here you go, that's from a special friend, okay? Ray will take your picture there.
All right. And you get Gary again.
This job is nothing but fun. Okay, let's move along, item F, Appointments. These are certain, I have seven reappointments this evening to boards and commissions. These can be done on an omnibus vote of council, is that okay with council? Okay, I'd like to read those. Number one, reappointment of William Alekno as to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2022. Number two, reappointment of Evelina Sici to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a three-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2023. Number three, reappointment of Mark Sawyer to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2023. Number four, reappointment of Norden Gilbert to the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2023. Number five, reappointment of Bernard Popino to the Airport Advisory Board for a four-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2024. Number six, reappointment of Tom Teresinski to the Finance Advisory Committee for a four-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2024. And number seven, reappointment to, of Ron Kline to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2025. I entertain a motion to approve these reappointments.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Those reappointments are approved as presented, thank you. In addition to these seven reappointments, I would like to share with council tonight some other board and committee action. Several folks will be leaving board service, including two from the Economic Development Commission, Trixio Flaherty and Mohamed Labadi. I'll be asking council approval of several new appointments in January. In addition, while council approval is not required on board chairmanships, I can announce tonight that I have asked Claire Crohn to head up our environmental commission, Max Maxwell to chair planning and zoning, and Jeff Richardson as the new chair of the Economic Now, item G, Consent Agenda. Items, again, are listed on the consent agenda, can be enacted by one motion, there's no separate discussion unless requested by a council member. Does any council member care to take any of these off the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Any discussion?
Mayor, you probably want to read the items.
I will read those items, thank you Clerk Fizikas. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 25, 2019. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through December 9, 2019, in the amount of Number three, approval of the notice of the 2020 annual schedule of meetings, councils, boards, commissions, and committees. Number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, November 2019. And number five, Resolution 2019-155 authorizing the continuation of health insurance benefits for Mark Nachman pursuant to Municipal Code Chapter 3.32, hardship retirement assistance. It's been moved and seconded that we approve that consent agenda as read. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Consent agenda is approved as presented. There are no public hearings tonight, there are several considerations. Number one, consideration of a public mural policy, and this is a non-action item, but I would like city manager Nicholas to speak to the item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This matter comes to you from the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. It is a topic that they have been working on for the better part of the last year. It is specifically, as I say in my background, a public mural policy, and you have had a chance to look at some of the details, just to highlight a few of them. There is an anticipation that over time, there may be some public funding from the City of DeKalb, and that that funding would be considered as part of our annual budget preparation process. We've just come through that, they understand that, and so this year, we'll probably have a couple of pilot opportunities where private sources and other public sources may be the source of the funding, but nevertheless, we wanted to, in their behalf, put this forward to you for your consideration tonight. The idea is, over time, that individuals and businesses and other community groups would come up with a one-to-one match for any city funds, they're not anticipating a major city allocation, a couple thousand dollars maybe to start in time. Murals would be proposed for buildings in historic districts and in downtown area and other areas of town, wherever they are visible from a public right-of-way, the city council's consideration and approval would be required. The design context or content obviously is something very important to the artist, but it would also be part of an approval process that would go through the commission and ultimately to the council. Artists who would be working on the public way would be holding, would have some insurance, be holding the city harmless for any work requiring setups on public property, scaffolding or what have you, and any eventual city grants would be extended through a contract, obviously, between the artist and the city, and there would be a time for performance and completion. So those are the key points. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, based on the council's direction tonight. I'll go back to the next committee meeting, which will be next week, I believe, and report on your impressions of their proposal.
The Enhancement Commission has worked pretty diligently on coming up with this, as well as sort of a more expanded public arts policy that they're discussing. Alderman Morris has been our council liaison to that commission. Carolyn, do you have any, any comments on, on where that Enhancement Commission is and what your take is on, on this?
Sure, I guess I just want to note that the commission has worked really hard on this, they have thought very deliberately over every element in their policy, and they're eager to see it passed.
Is there consensus then that this makes enough sense to council that we direct our city manager to bring forward something that we can take a formal vote on? Bill?
Thank you, I'll bring it back in the form of a resolution, probably.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move right along to resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2019-156, expressing sympathy in the passing of Ken Mundy, late mayor of the City of Sycamore. I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like the honor of making that motion.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Favor that we pass this resolution prior to our vote. What I'd like to do is to read the entire resolution in honor of Mayor Mundy. Whereas Kenneth Charles Ken Mundy served as mayor of the Sycamore from May 2005 until May of 2017, and whereas Ken Mundy served as the treasurer for the City of Sycamore from 1981 until 2005, and whereas Ken Mundy was a proud veteran who enlisted in the U.S. Navy in 1966, served his country on active duty in Vietnam and the Western Pacific waters through 1969, and whereas during his years of public service for the City of Sycamore, Ken Mundy was widely known and appreciated as a person of integrity, goodwill, and unwavering dedication to the proposition that what we accomplish together is best for all, and whereas Ken Mundy collaborated with his mayoral counterparts in DeKalb, including this mayor, Jerry Smith, as well as five NIU presidents in forging a variety of Com University initiatives, and whereas Ken Mundy was a loving husband to his wife, Winita, proud fathers of, father of daughters Rhonda and Pam, and a grandfather, and whereas Ken Mundy was a man of great faith who celebrated life while embracing our mortality. Now therefore, be it resolved by the DeKalb City Council that sincere and heartfelt sympathy is extended to the family and friends of Ken Mundy, a loving man and community leader who will be sorely missed, passed by this city council, and I trust we will pass this, the City of DeKalb in its regular meeting. It's been moved and seconded, roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Just, thank you, just one final comment, following Ken's funeral on Saturday, I believe was very, it was very fitting that Pastor Rudolph asked for some reflections on the late mayor's life. Two mayors, Kurt Lang and myself, along with two city managers, Brian Gregory and Bill Nicholas, each took a few minutes to speak. Mayor Mundy would have loved that. I mean, here was a guy who could look at four guys, three of which he had worked with for many, many years in Sycamore, and the DeKalb mayor. He was so proud of how our communities have been building on the bond between us, really proud of that, and so we'll keep you, we'll keep your spirit with us, Ken Mundy. May you rest in peace. Moving right along, number two, Resolution 2019-157, appropriating the sum of $560,000 of motor fuel tax funds for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, that's section 2000000000-GM, from January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Excuse me, Bill, do you want to say anything to this?
No, I, I'm just happy that you're moving along. This is a requirement that I'd have.
Yeah, the background, as usual, has been very good. Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved as presented and voted on. Number three, Resolution 2019-158, authorizing a supplemental resolution for $206,623.15 in motor fuel tax funds to reconcile section 19/00000000-GM under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager Nicholas, any further?
This is, just, this is a supplemental resolution, it kind of cleans up, I think, a very sound decision.
It kind of cleans up, I think, a very sound decision the council made back in the late spring to expand the scope of the North First Street paving project. And so we had to do another resolution to add approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars more. We got very good prices, and this helped us add about half again as much on the way of paving.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved as presented. Moving right along, number four, Resolution 2019-159, authorizing an agreement with the Board of Trustees of Northern Illinois University to provide safety services, including fire protection and ambulance service to the university from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2024. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I begin, I want to thank Fire Chief Jeff McMaster, who was a very integral part of this negotiation. It actually started before I began in January, and we finished it off at the end of the year. The five-year term is typical of the terms that we have agreed over the last 20 years or so with NIU for fire services. We provide EMS and fire services to them. There is a base amount, which you see in your background, of $831,714. Also part of this contract, which is also the case in the last five-year contract, there is a contribution from NIU for some fire vehicles. Also, we receive an annual NIU payment for ambulance-supported football games, other types of special events. And that will be an estimated $125,000 per year, but it will be what it will be. We don't control whether there's overtime or if there are problems as people are exiting the stadium. We're there to help, and we do a very good job of that. And also, and we thank NIU for this, we have, over the years, on occasion, been able to train in their vacant dorms during the summer months and other facilities. That's important to us, particularly since we have to run in those high-rise buildings from time to time. It's good to keep our, all of our shifts familiar, and they've agreed to those terms again this year. We recommend your support.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Alderman Favor.
Yeah, I will just second the city manager's comments. Thank you, Jeff, very much for working on this. I know that also Chief Hicks had a good working relationship with NIU as well, and I just appreciate you guys continuing in that tradition. Thank you.
If no further comments, roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved as presented. Number five, Resolution 2019-160, authorizing the city manager to sign a storage lease agreement with Hovis Light Industrial Park to store the DeKalb Fire Department's mobile unit from December 10, 2019 through April 30 of 2020. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, please.
We go from five years to five months. And this particular contract is specific to the winter storage of our mobile training tower. We've had it for a number of years now. Each year, it suffers through the winter. Last year, we topped $1,000 in repairs. There are water lines in there because one of the, one of the training features that we're able to, we have a water distribution system that's for fire stream and pump training. And we just decided enough is enough. Where could we go? Looked around. It's not so easy to find an overhead door that will fit this apparatus, and we did find one. It's the old, some of you know it as Spalding Fiber on South Simmons. It's now called the Hovis Light Industrial Park. They have other, some other equipment in there. We have checked. They definitely have insurance, as well as, obviously, we also insure our vehicles, but they have an umbrella liability policy for anything that they store. And the rate is right. It's about where we were last year in actual cost, in terms of repairs and so forth, $1,062. We'll be out of there at the end of April, because it'll be bright and shiny and 82 degrees in DeKalb.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved as presented. Moving right along, number six, Resolution 2019-161, authorizing the city manager to sign agreements for insurance coverage, effective January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in the amount of $454,149.44. May I have a motion, please?
So motion.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, any comments?
Just some thanks again to Ray Munch for pulling us together this year and in the last couple of years, working with others on our staff. We, as you can see in the background, have a variety of insurances. These are not health, per se, but workers' comp and cyber liability and property and automobile and so forth. We, they're all due on January 1, 2020. There is a firm that we've been using for a while, Gallagher and, Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, which delivers our insurance and risk management services. They've given us a very good price. We'd like to agree to a contract with them, and this resolution would afford that opportunity. We ask your support.
Any comments, questions? If not, roll call, please.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved as presented. Number seven, Resolution 2019-162, approving an intergovernmental agreement for the Project Hammer development. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Don't all speak at the same time now. I'm going to take that as a move by McAdams and a second by Finuchin. We do have several folks who would like to speak to this item. City Manager Nicholas, if that's okay, and then we'll open it up to any questions or comments that you might have. Our first speaker to this item is Paul Calligan. Hi, Paul.
Mayor Smith, council, good evening. My name is Paul Calligan. I live at 1512 Creighton Circle East in DeKalb, Illinois. I am here to speak in favor of the intergovernmental agreement for the Project Hammer development. As you know, I am a member of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation Board and have previously spoken in favor of other resolutions related to this project. Thank you for your past votes and statements of support for the exciting opportunity to bring a quality development to DeKalb. The impact for the construction trades, full-time employment, and property tax contribution, as specifically outlined in your materials, there is no question that this is a plan for thousands of jobs and millions of new tax dollars, and making it hugely significant. Prior to my retirement from ComEd, I was involved in several large-scale development projects, and all of them had unique financial and infrastructure requirements. Therefore, it is not unusual to see a request like this agreement come before a government body for approval. To the credit of city staff, the agreement includes specific benchmarks for hiring and construction progress for the incentives to become effective and remain in place. Based on the facts and the analysis before you, I believe that you can confidently cast a yes vote for the Project Hammer resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you. On behalf of Project Hammer, I would like to thank the entire council for their consideration of this resolution, as well as the next one, as they're critical to the company's site selection efforts. I'd also like to thank City Manager Bill Nicholas and his team for their help to get us to this point tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, distinguished members of council. As executive director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I've worked with, I've worked on Project Hammer with Bill Nicholas and city staff, as well as Jerry Krasinski in the Chicago West Business Center, Public Utilities, and the State of Illinois, as well as Jack DiNardo and his team. As well documented in the city's presentation tonight, Project Hammer represents a development of significant proportion. All phases of Project Hammer call for 2.4 million square feet of new building space, 1.4 million of which would be manufacturing, with ample room for expansion. The addition of 2.4 million square feet would represent a full 15% increase in the industrial space of the entire county from one single project. Tax revenue generation estimated to be $69 million over 15 years. This amount nearly matches the revenue generated by a major portion of DeKalb's industrial base, Nestle, Panduit, 3M, Target, and Goodyear, during a similar 15-year period. Increased tax revenue would expand and diversify the tax base and help reduce the burden on individual taxpayers. Job creation is estimated to be 1,000 permanent jobs and another 1,000 temporary construction jobs. In fact, the Project Hammer intergovernmental agreement calls for a minimum job creation amounting to 1,000 for the three specified projects, parcels. Such levels of job creation could increase demand for housing and help accelerate residential and commercial development, further diversifying and expanding the tax base. Project Hammer, an international confectioner, would significantly increase DeKalb County's footprint in the food processing industry, one of the largest and fastest-growing sectors in Illinois. The Targeted Industries Committee of DeKalb County's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS Plan, identified food processing as one of the top sectors to recruit to DeKalb County. The growth of food processing is certainly in line with the county's rich agricultural history and heritage. Increased food processing and sustained agricultural industry development could contribute to the development of the Northern Illinois Center for Community Sustainability, a research center planned by Northern Illinois University in cooperation with the Illinois Innovation Network. In addition, a significant increase in jobs, particularly career jobs, in support of manufacturing operations, could help retain and attract NIU students to settle in DeKalb County, increasing our population and our long-term talent pool. DCEDC has found that projects of this scale benefit the entire county, with employer, with employees of the largest industrial businesses, Target and 3M, currently residing in every community within DeKalb County. In my experience in DeKalb County and elsewhere, few projects of this scale are in play during any single year or ever for most communities and counties. This megaproject exceeds the expectations envisioned even with the creation of the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone program and warrants the special consideration given by the city of DeKalb and its partner taxing bodies. Further, I assure you that the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone is assisting Krasinski Construction Company with their present work on land preparation, and will assist Project Hammer with qualified state and local enterprise zone benefits. On behalf of the ongoing efforts of DCEDC in support of city staff and the DeKalb taxing bodies, I urge your approval of the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for the Project Hammer development. I also urge your support of the following item, the resolution approving the electric utility tax incentive agreement for Project Hammer, as part of the inducements required to attract the project. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and I understand perhaps Jerry Blasey of Northern Illinois University will elaborate on business partnerships and student retention.
And speaking of Jerry Blasey, he's next up. So thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor Smith and council. I should be brief. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jerry Blasey. I'm the vice president for research and innovation partnerships at Northern. I'm here on behalf of President Freeman. Unfortunately, she was unable to attend this evening, but we wanted to ensure you the university supports Project Hammer. I'd like to amplify just a bit on Mr. Borick's comments on partnerships with the Northern Illinois Center for Community Sustainability, or NICS. As you know, NICS will receive $15 million from the state to promote innovation around food systems, water resources, and ecosystems. And as part of the Illinois Innovation Network, NICS is supposed to promote job creation and workforce development, and we see a partnership with Project Hammer an important component of that mission. Collaboration with a major member of the food manufacturing sector will be natural, fruitful, and strengthen the community. We also agree with Mr. Borick that retention of our graduates in the area will strengthen the university and the community. But what's more, Project Hammer will increase opportunity for our students, also many of them have to work, first-generation students, and increased opportunity in the region will help us recruit and train, retain, and be more attractive to prospective students. The IGA and Project Hammer will be an important step forward for DeKalb and NIU, and we look forward to working with the city to support the success of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Those are the only individuals who have indicated a desire to speak to this item, so with that, I'm going to ask City Manager Nicholas to speak to the item. He provided a significant background for us. And then we will open it up to any comments or questions from council. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank those who have taken the time to come out tonight, and I don't think I could improve upon their appraisal of the promise and the expected economic impact of Project Hammer. I will try to limit my comments, at least for the present, to the specifics of what's before you tonight, which is an intergovernmental agreement. I would just add that what is promised here is in excess of $100 million of new investment in the possibility of, I believe Paul Borick referred to this, 1,000 full-time equivalent jobs, not to mention about 1,000 construction jobs, which will be involved over the next period of years. And we look forward to all of that. In the next two weeks, starting tonight and then moving through this week and next week leading up to the holiday, I will be going to other taxing bodies with this intergovernmental agreement. Mayor will join me on some of those visits. And my purpose will be to describe what we, as local taxing bodies, would be willing to offer to incent the investment that we have been discussing here tonight. So let me get to the point. The taxing bodies involved here are, of course, the city of DeKalb, the county of DeKalb, and also the DeKalb County Forest Preserve District, the DeKalb Community Unit School District, 428, the DeKalb Library District, DeKalb Park District, DeKalb Township, and also DeKalb Township Road District, Kishawaki College, Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. Tomorrow night, I go to Kishawaki College. Wednesday, Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, and also the township, and then a special meeting of the DeKalb School Board on Thursday. And I'll be going back to see the school board at their regular meeting in the following week, and as well next week. I'll be before the library and the park district boards. week, and as well next week, I'll be before the library and the Park District Boards. So, there are a couple of different layers of incentives here that are described. There is a state incentive, which is just mentioned here, which is part of the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone package of incentives. The principal incentive that is proposed is a 15-year property tax abatement. Why not a 10-year? Members of the city council are familiar with the Enterprise Zone package, which includes a 10-year property tax abatement, with slightly different gradations over those 10 years. The issue is that we are, or the challenge is that we are in a very competitive world, and Project Hammer is in a very competitive business, looking for the best site in the Midwest, and other sites have been offering 15-year packages. To be able to compete, we have to do the same. And interestingly, the DeKalb County Enterprise Package of a 10-year property tax incentive program comes over 10 years to about a 50-50 sharing of property tax revenues. And so, what we've done is to propose an intergovernmental agreement, which basically stretches that over 15 years, 50-50, so we get to the end. Paul Calligan and Paul Borick both touched on the fact that we're also interested in the creation of jobs. We've been talking about this, I know, for years, the creation of career-type jobs that can support families and invite people to come to DeKalb to start their homes, their lives, or to continue them here. And so, that is also an important piece of the agreement before you tonight. This draft does link maintenance of certain levels of jobs at the various building parcels, which have some different purposes, links that to the continuation of the incentive package at the levels that we would start at, and we feel that's an important consideration, and Project Hammer was not reluctant to embrace that. I will add, and we have another item after this, which is the electrical utility tax abatement. The city of DeKalb, for its part, has a number of other things that is willing to offer. The council's already committed to the $500,000 out of the water capital fund for the extension and the looping of our water main system from points at the northeast and northwest of the Chicago West Business Park to come down to Gerler Road in sort of a U-shaped pattern, and that will serve not only Project Hammer, but the possibility of another project south of Gerler Road. And we are also working with the state of Illinois through their Economic Development Program, which will hopefully afford us, with the support, by the way, of Representative Demmer and Keiker, help us with the widening and the upgrading of Gerler Road from a two-lane section to a three-lane section, very much like Fairview Drive, with appropriate traffic control both at Gerler and 23 and Gerler and Peace Road. I will stop there. I obviously am wholeheartedly behind this. This has been a very, I would say, engaging and rewarding negotiation in recent months. We are very proud and pleased to present this to you for your support tonight.
With that, I would... Pardon me. With that, I would like to entertain any questions, comments, whatever. Alderman Fanouken.
I think I'd just like to really make a comment, and Mr. DiNardo, please take this back to who you represent. You've seen by the hard work by our city manager, along with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation and the rest of our city staff, how much that we want this project here. As senior member of council, I think I can speak to that. I said at a previous meeting, we really want you to come to DeKalb. I think you'll find an appropriate place for you to be here with our great transportation, our great education. I think this is the place you need to be, and we hope we can do anything we can to convince you to do that. Thank you.
Alderman McAdams.
I just want to amplify what we've heard here tonight. This is a great opportunity for the city of DeKalb, and we're all very excited about the project. The taxpayers especially have spoken out about the city staff and the way that they've negotiated the contract, and a special thank you to the city staff for the clawback clause, which is very important to many of the taxpayers here in the city.
Any other comments? Alderman Faver?
Yeah, I just, I'll echo my fellow councilman's comments with the city staff, just kudos for your hard work. The DCEDC are governing and taxing bodies that we're working with and trying to partner with on this. I just thank everyone for your hard work, because I know it's been hours and hours, and it's taken a long time to get it to this point, but as the city manager said, we are in a very competitive market, and I was reading about some abatements that another community is giving, and just how competitive it really is. But looking through the documentation, and by the way, it's also very well documented in here, very transparent, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this from all the parties, and I think it's going to be a fantastic project. Thank you.
Any other, Alderman Verbic?
Yes, having been an elected official for a number of these agreements over the past, I would like to applaud everyone involved for the collaborative nature and the approach that everyone took at keeping everyone informed along the way, so thank you.
As members of this council know very well, we have a city manager who continues to perform extraordinary service to this community as he approaches the end of his first year back with us. On the Project Hammer scenario, I can't begin to tell you and tell the public how exemplary his performance has been, the time he spent working on behalf of all of us. All of us in the community is to be commended, and I hope you join me in agreeing with that sentiment. So, if there are no other comments, and Bill, you are finished with your comments, I think we are ready to vote on this intergovernmental agreement. Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved as presented. Moving right along, number eight, Resolution 2019-163, approving an electrical utility tax incentive agreement for the Project Hammer development. I'd entertain a motion on this resolution, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we approve this resolution. Any further comments? If not, city manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is wholly within the purview of the city council. The city does lay a utility tax, in this case, the electrical utility tax, and we have, as part of the negotiation, talked about the advantage that we can give by sharing a portion of this. We have negotiated, as this resolution informs you, that 50% allocation over the 15 years consistent with a property tax abatement. This will, the Project Hammer, as I mentioned very modestly in the background here, will generate, and I very conservatively estimated, in excess of $450,000 a year just in electrical utility taxes, and I think it's substantially north of that upon full build-out, and to share half of that would still leave us with a substantial amount of revenue when you consider that the total of all of our electrical utility tax revenue in the last year was 1.75 million. Paul hit the mark earlier where he said we're increasing not on the overall industrial space in the county, but also that this shows how momentous the investment on the part of the company would be. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this resolution and the description? Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved as presented. Number nine, Resolution 2019-164, authorizing an amendment, an amendment to the intergovernmental Enterprise Zone Property Tax Abatement Agreement with the county board of DeKalb County, the town council of Cortland, the city council of DeKalb, the city council of Genoa, the city council of Sandwich, the city council of Sycamore, and the village board of Waterman. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not specifically related to the last two items, but it is impactful nevertheless. You remember back in October, I brought you a resolution, which you approved unanimously, which also was brought in a similar form to our other partners in the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, the other municipalities, and this was to amend how we approach a number of things. One was to broaden our definition of logistics companies, to include data centers, to include the NIU West Campus as eligible for the zones incentive package, where there are private investments that are made, and other aspects of what we consider to be the changing scene in industrial development and investment. We are informed by the consultant for the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone that we should do one more thing. I call this a belt-and-suspenders item. When we go back and we amend the original intergovernmental agreement that was forged five years ago with other municipalities in the county, so it comes to the same thing, we're just saying it differently, and we recommend your approval.
Any discussion or any questions of city manager Nicholas on this? If not, roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution is approved as presented. If you recall, we have opted to move item number 10 to near the end of the meeting, so we will move right along to K, ordinances, second reading, there are none. L, ordinances, first reading. Ordinance, number one, ordinance 2019-084, authorizing an FY 2019 budget amendment to provide for capital expenditures of motor fuel tax funds for roadway improvements. I'd entertain a motion to approve this on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. This will look real familiar. We just did a supplemental resolution with Ida, and now we have to clean up some of our own business. We have a budget that needs, for 2019, that needs to be tidied up in the same amount of $206,623.15, which is the additional cost of the expansion of the North First Street paving project. We recommend your approval, and hopefully on first and second reading, so we begin to close the books on the FY 19 budget.
Thank you. Any further comments on this first reading consideration? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That motion is approved on, or ordinance is approved on first reading. Does anyone care to waive second reading?
Move that we waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Perkins that we waive second reading and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Number two, ordinance 2019-085, amending Chapter 67, Body Art Establishments, tattooing as it pertains to microblading. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City manager Nicholas, would you like to speak to this first reading?
Hesitantly. I don't presume to be an expert on microblading, as you might have guessed, but I can read what the city attorney helped write. This is a semi-permanent form of tattooing. It involves some fine-point needles and some penetration of the skin, obviously is controlled by Department of Health, Public Health regulations, which are also applicable to some of our body art establishments. There has been interest, we're not alone, a lot of interest in the Chicagoland area and in our Coller County area in microblading, and we have brought this forward to you for your consideration tonight and ask for your approval.
Discussion, Alderman Morris.
Sorry, do you want to start?
No, go ahead. Alderman Fanouken, don't fight over.
No, go ahead. I'm letting her go.
I am very familiar with microblading. I've heard of it for the last 20 years, honestly, but I wanted to make sure if we have someone in the audience who can speak to it, to give us more details, if we need more details, that we do that. But I also want to say, are we going to need to approve a number of licenses along with this? Because I thought we had a limited number of licenses on tattoo shops, and in my opinion, every beauty salon-type place in town should sort of have the opportunity to do this.
Alderman Fanouken, did you have a comment?
I had a question, and it was more, you know, city manager Nicholas has indicated that there's been some interest, and I was curious if it was one of our current establishments or an additional establishment that's raised the question.
A current establishment.
Thank you.
So, the council, by approving this, it affords currently licensed establishments to be able to do some other things. That is my understanding, as I sit here tonight.
Alderman Morris.
So, would this afford the opportunity to spas and salons to apply, to have the same opportunity?
Yes. It's within, it's within the parameters of the Public Health Department and the Illinois Department of Public Health rules and regulations, as I understand it, for microblading, so they have to go through a certain amount of training and certification.
I'm just wondering if it would be efficient to put a number on this, if, like, so what I'm saying is, the next time an organization comes and they're like, hey, we want to add, so say a non-tattoo establishment wants to do microblading, will we need to add a number of these to allow for that? And so, it seems inefficient not to include that.
If you want to pursue that, we can table this and come back.
Does anyone else on the council know what microblading is?
Alderman Faver?
So, reading the descri, I've not heard of microblading, but is this where somebody might have eyeliner, permanent eyeliner put on and things like that? So, I'm aware of that.
Our city attorney has worked on this with some other municipalities.
Yeah. It's not, it's not permanent like a tattoo is, but it does, excuse me, but does last a long time. For example, if you want to have that eyeliner, you can be there, and it'll last for many months. I've heard of people getting their lipstick color microbladed on, so that will last in long term, but it is not like tattooing, and it is not as permanent as a tattoo. Apparently, the needlework doesn't go as deep into the derma and the tissue where, so it doesn't create that as long-lasting effect.
I mean, I'm aware of other, well, I had a boss who had it done, so I'm aware of it being done. I don't, I don't know that I would say we need... I don't, I don't know that I would say we need to limit the number of licenses if there are spas and salons in DeKalb that want to begin to offer this service or whatever. I think as long as they're following the health code and the requirements, I'm okay with that.
Alderman Morris.
Right. I agree entirely that we don't need to limit the number, but because this is being put under the tattoo ordinance, doesn't that automatically limit the number? That's kind of what I'm getting at. That's my concern.
We have to look at that.
I guess we'll bring it back. We'll have to investigate that. It's for any body art establishments, and so we have a, a chapter in our city code which refers to body art establishments. Tattooing is one of those.
I'm happy to approve this on first reading and waive second reading even. I, I'm familiar with it. Microblading is an eyebrow treatment frequently done now, very, very common, and I think that we shouldn't slow it down, but, so maybe in the future we'll have to do something else.
So logistically, City Manager Nicholas, if we were to vote and approve this on first reading, we could then tweak it so we could bring it back for second reading?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or would you prefer that we table the whole thing and start anew?
Well, I think other person, Morris, has a good suggestion. We, we consider this on first reading only, which is basically receiving and filing it, and bring it back at the next regular meeting.
Okay. Alderman Faver?
I think, I think what I'm hearing the Alderman say is, the ordinance is under the tattooing, but like I had said, and I think what you're questioning is, if a salon wanted to offer this service, they're not a tattoo shop today, they're not licensed as a body art facility. So could a, could a salon or spa, day spa, offer these services not being part of? And I think that's the question that you're asking, in terms of putting it under that ordinance.
If you look at the ordinance, it, so it's specific, it specifically says this can be for spas, salons, other establishments. In fact, the impetus for this came not from a tattoo center, but from other professionals.
So what I'm suggesting, I think the easiest way, if that company wants to do business sooner, the easiest way might be just to say that we're going to say, "Hey, we can allow 10 or 20, you know, an unlimited number, perhaps adding in that an unlimited number of, you know, microblading establishments may exist. Perhaps that would circumvent the need to specify a number, and maybe we can just put that alongside this." Because I think, you know, if they want to do business, I don't want to slow them down. So I would love to be able to get this done today.
So we have a motion on the floor, and a second, to approve this on first reading. Our city manager has indicated that some of the questions may, in fact, be answered in the ordinance as it is now on the books. So we will go ahead and vote on first reading, excuse me, vote on first reading.
Can I have a quick question?
Yes, yes, just a moment. And then, and then, we'll see where we want to go with this. Alderman Perkins, excuse me.
So if you go back and do some homework on it, will the homework be inclusive of determining if this is the right section of code for it to be under? And if there's another section that's more beneficial, will the first reading still apply?
Yeah, we can, you know, this is a shakeout, basically, to see how we answer those questions and bring almost any text back for the second reading with approval of the council. The council can amend its, its ordinance and its process here. I believe it's in the proper section. City Attorney was involved in the vetting of that. The question that was raised by Alderman is, are, is it appropriate to have a limit? And are there currently limits on tattoo establishments? And as I sit here, I'm not certain of that answer. This was something we added on at the end because somebody was very interested in approaching this for the holiday season, so.
I, I agree, though. I think it's something that seems like a no-brainer to do it. I don't really want to slow it down, but I'm just concerned about the section that it falls under.
Sure, sure.
You know, I don't know if there's a section in the code for, for salons, and would it be more appropriate as under that rather than tattooing? I don't know. And that's my question.
Yeah. How about if we investigate and bring that back to you at the next meeting?
Alderman Morris.
I'm sorry. Just in the interest of being business-friendly, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I am happy to approve this, as is waive second reading even, and let it be so that this company can make progress and offer this for the holidays if they'd like to. I'd rather have people getting this done here in town rather than, sorry, rather than, you know, driving 45 minutes elsewhere to get it done. So I want us to focus on being business-friendly as we pursue this, and maybe we aren't doing it perfectly. I don't know, so I'll say no more.
Okay. Well, let's take a crack at first reading then, and see where we go from there. Roll call, please, on first reading.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Now, Carolyn, do you want to waive second reading on this and move forward?
Sure. I'll move to waive second reading.
Second.
Who was that? Alderman Faver, okay. Second, first, first. Motion by Alderman Morris, second by Alderman Faver, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved as presented. With the proviso that we're going to discuss this a little further down the road, perhaps in terms of what we are calling it, okay? Okay. Number three, Ordinance 2019-086, approving a special use permit for a cell antenna at 100 West Lincoln Highway, mobile tie, and that's at Walgreens. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there were a couple minor zoning considerations before them. The first was the request to install a cell antenna, which is at the Walgreen store at First and Lincoln. Our UDO requires a special use permit for such antennas on a commercial property. This one is going to be very modest. It's going to stand about 10 feet above the top of the building canopy, and it will be about 250 feet away from the nearest residential zone property line, meets all of our codes and ordinances. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request last week, and by a vote of five to zero, recommended your approval, and we recommend your approval of the Plan Commission action.
Any, any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved on first reading. Anyone care to waive second reading?
Moved that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved as presented. Number four, Ordinance 2019-087, approving a final plat of the McCormick re-subdivision to combine lots 72, 73, and 74 in South Point Greens Unit 2. That's Pebble Beach Court, and this is by Charles McCormick. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Faver. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There are three lots joined that are varying size down in the South Point Greens Unit 2 subdivision, and a couple of very agreeable purchasers, subdividing individuals are looking to merge the three lots into two, make them even-sized lots, just right for some nice single-family homes. This was before you tonight. Plan Commission liked the idea, recommends it to you, and we recommend it as well.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Desire to waive second reading.
Moved to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you.
That is approved as presented. Now, we, if you recall, we're going back to number 10. We amended the agenda to make this our final action item, and that is Resolution 2019-165, approving the cancellation of the December 23, 2019 Committee of the Whole and Regular Meeting of the City Council, and approving the payment of invoices for the second part of December prior to the January 13, 2020 Regular Meeting of City Council. I'd entertain a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas, any comments on that?
No. I know I speak for 230 people. Since you approve this.
Roll call, please.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That is approved as presented. Now we move to item M on the agenda, Reports and Communications. Each of the council members are afforded the opportunity here to report on anything they'd like to communicate. We'll start with Alderman Carolyn Morris.
I had a number of meetings this past week, one of which I had the opportunity to meet with the tenants' association leader, and it's really good to hear the progress that they are making on trying to identify a common lease that may help protect tenants more so. I also had the opportunity to meet with John Pappas, who showed me some of his newly renovated dwellings that are in my ward, and he underscored the importance of ensuring that current landlords are keeping up their buildings and the point that this makes our town a more attractive town to be in. What else? I met with the Antiglen North Revitalization Group's Community Services Committee that's getting started up here, and it's a group of a lot of community service organizations, and it's really exciting. We're about to set strategic goals for the next year, and I'm really looking forward to what I hope that will develop into, so.
Yeah.
That's it. And happy holidays.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken.
A couple items. Alderman Perkins and I held a joint ward meeting a week ago, and while it was a small crowd, they were very interested and actively engaged with us, so we appreciate that. I want to congratulate a resident of the second ward and a longtime friend, Dee Abrahamson, who is retired NIU softball coach and administrator, and she was recently inducted into the National Fast Pit Coaches Association Hall of Fame, and it is her third Hall of Fame induction. And then lastly, I hope everyone safely enjoys the holiday season.
Thank you. Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith.
Special thanks to Alderman Fanouken for getting me involved with IHSA. It was rather fun. A little chilly, but rather fun. Second is, I've been keeping an eye on the project, the Pappas Project, as well as Carolina, I think, at Fourth and Locust, and if anybody's noticed, there is cycling almost all of the product down there, and Mr. Pappas has contacted me, there's several large oak timbers available. If anybody wants them, give them a call. He has separated them for anybody's use that wants to pick them up. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Perkins.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the, all the people that came out to the ward meeting this past week. It was, it was really good getting to meet people and, and talk about our community. And I also like to wish everyone happy holidays and encourage everyone to take in some high school sports. I think DeKalb High School wrestling team looks particularly strong this year.
They sure do.
I mean, they're one of the, the top teams in the state, and I know they have a couple events coming up through the holidays, so take them in.
Thank you. Alderman McAdams, no report. Alderman Verbic.
Long overdue welcome in the sixth ward to Aunt Sassy's Quilts and the Comfort Inn. Have a wonderful holiday, everyone.